Good afternoon, everybody. Please take your seats. The first item on the agenda this afternoon is apologies for absence. councillor Jones? You've taken my joke, hold on. As long as you're not aliases.
councillor Blakewell, I think most of us are aware, she's not skiving, she's actually training to be paramedic, so she's undergoing some examinations this afternoon, but we might all eventually benefit from her services, you never know.
Val, I think you and I would be first in the list, probably. Yeah councillor Strong?
Apologies from councillors Peter Fox, Matt Pekins and Giles Hurst.
councillor Dimitri Petroni?
Possible apologies from councillor Easton, he's trying to make it back from a meeting.
Okay, you understand the circumstances. councillor Harris?
Thank you Chair. Personal interest declaration, I'm a member of the valuation tribunal of Wales for item six.
Yes similarly for me, Chair, and item six four.
Yes, I've got a personal and prejudicial interest in the same item sixty, so I won't take any part in that discussion.
Thank you Chair, personal non prejudicial interest, if I can get my words out, in item six B, as an employee of ADSS Cymru and as a chair of governors for primary school in Monmouth.
Thank you very much indeed. We go on now to chairman's announcements and petitions. Are there any petitions that wish to be presented? Yeah councillor?
Thank you Chair. Petition here from the residents of Park Crescent and Park Avenue in Priorie Ward and I Ward in Abigavenny and adjoining streets. They call on Monmasha County Council to take urgent action to address the serious issues of traffic speed on their residential roads that provide walking routes to three local schools and the practice of some young drivers using Fairfield Car Park for dangerous driving at night. We ask for a 20 mile an hour speed limit on the roads in our immediate area and steps to stop the car park being used as a racetrack. There are 313 signatures on the petition. This issue of excessive speed was brought to the attention of myself and my colleague councillor Martin Grokert. We called a public meeting, over 100 people turned out to express concern about their safety on these roads. And really the main concerns are, because these two roads are relatively wide and relatively straight and they do appear to encourage excessive speed. But the main concerns are, one, excessive speed on both roads causing danger particularly to pedestrians but also to other road users as well. A huge increase of volume of traffic due to the advent of Morrison's supermarket. There are now three sets of traffic lights on Park Road, the A40, and motorists at peak times are using Park Crescent, Park Avenue as a rat run to avoid congestion on the A40. Both streets are main routes for King Henry VIII School, for Cantrave and for the Catholic Primary School and obviously as an authority we encourage people to walk or cycle, but these two roads are becoming unsafe. Also excessive speeds that come from, I was going to say boy and girl racers, but in fact many of them are in their twenties and thirties and you'd hope they'd know a little bit better. They congregate at nights in the Fairfield Car Park and then they do a circuit of Park Avenue and Park Crescent at excessive speeds, often with very loud exhausts which disturb people's sleep. I'm in the process of getting the barrier locked at the top of the Fairfield Car Park and hope I will be successful at that, which will alleviate the problem. There is quite a bit of anecdotal evidence of excessive speeds during the day, numerous near misses which unfortunately haven't been officially logged. A pet dog was killed, talking to one person who signed the petition. A family emailed me, almost begging me for a reduction in the speed limit to ensure the safety of their junior aged children. They want them to walk to school, they want them to be safe when they go along those streets. No one refused to sign the petition, it was literally grabbed out of our hands when we took it round. Councillor Martin Grokert and I have a really genuine concern for pedestrians using both these streets. It is an area of genuine concern for the safety of pedestrians and particularly children and elderly people. And councillor Grokert and I have met with Roger Hoggins yesterday and Graham Consella to discuss the issue of imposing a 20 mile an hour speed limit. In many other areas, notably in London but also in places like Cardiff Cathedral Road now has a 20 mile an hour speed limit for the safety of pedestrians. I make a very strong plea that a 20 mile an hour speed limit is put in place very quickly before someone is killed or seriously injured. Thank you very much. Diakaval.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item number five, a presentation to council about the development of My Mates and that's the success of today. councillor Penny Jones, please.
Thank you Chair. It gives me great pleasure to share with the council the success of the My Mates project and celebrate it having recently won the social care accolade for innovative and creative solutions. This was presented at City Hall in Cardiff by the minister. My Mates is an exciting and innovative initiative which seeks to facilitate and support people to develop friendships, have active social lives and opportunities to form deeper, more exclusive relationships, and I may say to have fun. I'd like to ask the team to introduce themselves now before we go any further. Sarah, would you like to start?
Hi, yeah, I'm Sarah Seaborn, I'm the My Mates manager.
Thank you very much, Sarah. So Sarah, I think we're going to hand over to you and you're going to make the introductions to the members who've come here today. Okay, thank you.
Hi, fantastic. I'd like to introduce Rhiannon, who is a My Mates member, and Tony, who's also a My Mates member, and in a few moments they'll sort of tell you about My Mates and what it means to them. So Penny's obviously given us a very eloquent introduction. We're very proud of My Mates, it's a fantastic project. It originated from the My Day My Life workings. We'd sort of had very different relationships with people and when we were going around reviewing people, they'd actually told us what was vitally important to them and what was missing. And in each and every occasion that was friendships and relationships. People didn't tell us that their services were important, they told us that their relationships were important and they were lacking. So, you know, as a team, what could we do about that? How would we go forward? So we started to work with people to create unpaid support, friendships that are not paid, to work on creating social opportunities and networks. As a team, we're CCARD registered, we work with lots of different departments, we work quite closely with LGBT plus, we hold workshops and information, we work with NHS Wales, and indeed we've had some great success at ending isolation, encouraging individuals to utilise their local community, and just to build self-esteem and confidence. I think probably the members would be able to tell you a little bit more about that. So if I hand you over to Tony?
Hello, my name is Tony Kea and I've been a My Mates member for about approximately about three years, due to the passing of my father, who knew a lot of people in the council. It has helped me get out of the house, have a lot more confidence in myself, and also built up a lot of friendships as well, because without My Mates I wouldn't have any friends. Because before My Mates I never got out to meet anybody, I just stayed at home and that was it. I used to go out to go to work and went home and shut the door and that, you know, didn't meet anybody. And also it's helped with emotional support as well. You can get a little bit of counselling sometimes with My Mates. So, you know, they're not just there to just take you out and, you know, have a good time, they're there for emotional support as well. And also it's helped me build my future. So as I was saying to your councillor colleague over there, I'm actually thinking about setting up my own business because of My Mates. So my father was a baker, I'm a baker slash chef, so I'm thinking of sort of having my own business and with My Mates it's helped me sort of achieve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
My name's Rhiannon. With My Mates I've been for a few months and it's helped me to get out of bed in the mornings, gives me a purpose for the day ahead and it helps me to make new friends and plan for the future. And I feel less lonely as well and feel more positive about the future.
As Penny said, we recently won the social care accolade for innovative and creative solutions, so we'd like to share with you the video that was made for that day. Thank you. I think I'm not sure whether I said earlier that we started off with in Monmasha and we've now got ICF funding to roll this out across the whole of the five Gwent authorities. So it's no mean feat ahead of us but we're up for the challenge. Thank you for all your support. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you all for coming today and showing us exactly how important this project is. And I think we ought to add that your Christmas do, which they have arranged, I believe the members have arranged, is in the Celtic manner, it is a ball and they are staying the night and they will have fun. I mean, that's far better than I will even do, so have fun and have a good Christmas and thank you for coming.
All right, we now go on to notices of motion. The first one this afternoon is from councillor Dimitri Petroni, over to you.
Thank you Chair. Can I move straight away as required the alteration which I'll quickly read out, in addition to the original? Note anecdotal evidence that some of our commissioned care providers regularly use zero hour contracts and pay minimum wage to their carers visiting Monmasha residents. That we ask the adult select committee to investigate the scale of this issue, bring forward recommendations to the council to encourage commissioned care providers to pay their staff a decent level of pay and offer them secure contracts for incredible work they do.
I think that amendment has been emailed to all of us, hasn't it? Last night, yeah, thank you. Are you all content to accept the alterations? councillor Greenland? Oh, you're content? Can you all signal you are content, please? Thank you very much indeed. Right, now that is now the substantial motion, off you go.
Thank you Chair. Through personal circumstances, I got...
Sorry Dimitri, can somebody just second it? Thank you, okay. Right, sorry about that.
Thank you Chair. Through personal circumstances, I got chatting to a carer who worked for, who works for a company that we commission, while she was looking after a family member. And the conversation, you know, was wide ranging, but we eventually came, you know, talked, discussed about the job. The particular person, I'm not going to mention names or anything like that, but this particular person had just returned to work from being a mother. And it's quite hard to get back into work, I don't know myself, but she was telling me it was quite hard to get back into work once going on motherhood. And the opportunities were great. This job was available and it's the only type of job she could find. And I'll just give you a few details, it's anecdotal story, so I can't prove it's across the board. But this story she gave me was terrifying and moved me so much that I felt compelled to propose this motion. Where a member of staff who looks after, comes and visits some of the most vulnerable people in our communities is paid, she gets called the night before telling her what hours she might have or might not have the very next day. She's got several children, I'll put it like that. Then she's paid minimum wage for the work she does. She is docked pay if she spends any amount of time over the amount she's meant to spend per client. So she loses pay if she spends too much time with someone, basically. Many of you know, a lot of people they see have complex difficulties and sometimes it's not possible to do everything that person requires in their house within a set period of time. Sometimes it does go over. So they're actively penalised for doing that. I am told as well that travelling between clients, they are not paid. I have no evidence to back that up, but that's what I was told. The transport, they have to provide themselves as well. So this one story, I felt compelled to see this council has to sort of investigate how widespread this is. And so my alteration was to allow the adult select committee to thoroughly investigate said practices amongst our commissioned care providers. How endemic this practice is, is it even truthful? And that is as simple as that. I feel everyone in this community, particularly companies that we commission to do care to our most vulnerable, should adhere to certain standards that we as a council expect, and actually to certain standards we would expect as a human being, both as an employee or recipient of any care ourselves.
And councillor Jones, now I'll come to you councillor.
Thank you Chair, thank you councillor Dimitri. I cannot comment on any individual cases obviously and I have no knowledge of this case, but I do suggest, you know, if you have a particular problem then perhaps you could contact myself or the chief officer and perhaps we could help in some way. Sorry, okay, thank you. I'd like to just give some background information as to where we are now and in fact indeed where adult select are, which may be, you know, of news to you. So currently, Monmasha County Council's commissioned independent domiciliary care providers offer both guaranteed hour contracts and zero contracts to their staff, with many paying wage rates consistent with the national minimum wage whilst other agencies pay above the national minimum wage to support better staff recruitment and retention. Now, regulations by Welsh Government have recently brought in to curb these zero hours in the sector. RISC, which is a set of regulations relating to domiciliary care, which puts a requirement on all providers to reduce the level of zero rating. There is a growing acknowledgement across the UK sector that the traditional model of time allocated slots to provide personal care tasks is broken. We have evidence that the current system can lead to less person centred outcomes, difficulties in the recruitment of carers and providers struggling to continue to operate. Social care and health has embarked upon its programme on turning the world upside down as it has acknowledged that we need to fundamentally transform the current model of care at home. One aspect of the new design aspires to achieve predictable payments based on patches and this has been a challenging but important exercise. We need to alter the dynamic away from paying per hour, per task, to giving providers a budget to deliver care in a match, thus offering them financial certainty, the ability to recruit staff on formal contracts of employment and the flexibility to support people in their patch in any way that matters. A report was presented to adult select on the 8th of February regarding the implementation of transformational approach to the delivery of care at home, which will develop, which will deliver a fundamentally different model of care and address issues relating to workforce recruitment, retention and terms and conditions. Work is ongoing into this big project within social care and health and to implement this new model of care at home and a report will be brought back to adult select as part of their work programme, it is on their work programme. A programme which I may add, we wholeheartedly support. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Jones. councillor Watts?
Yes Chair, I think it's, I think anybody that's cared for anybody will appreciate how difficult the task is to care for, whether it's a family member or anybody else in a community. So, you know, I find the statements from councillor Petroni to be shocking really. I think it's a clear case of where the industry is simply just exploiting its workforce. It's a cultural thing and I think that really we as a local authority should lead the way and stop this frankly medieval practice really. You know, what we have to accept as well is if you look at the overall demographic of this authority, we ain't getting any younger, we're increasingly getting older, we're going to be reliant on these services even more as the years pour before us. So really we need to get on top of it and we need to address it, so I'm more than happy to support Dimitri. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else wish to comment? councillor Greenland, I'll come to you then.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. I think we would all feel sympathy with the views expressed by councillor Petroni in the way that he put it. We as a council have already taken decisions that we will offer permanent contracts where we can in the sort of circumstances that you've just explained. And it is disturbing when we hear reports such as you've just relayed to us. And I think that the idea of recommending, and that's all we can do to the committee, that they look at this and then come back to council, I'm absolutely with you on that. Unfortunately, that's not what the motion says. And when I first of all read it without having seen the amendment that came through last night, it talked about staff directly employed by us. Well, I thought, hang on, our staff are not employed in this way, but we do employ for instance, part-time staff at our leisure centres in the summer months in particular on play schemes. If they worked a couple of months and they worked 20 hours one month, one hour the next month, this motion seems to be saying that we should offer them a permanent contract for one hour a month. Now that I'm sure is not what you meant, but that is the way that your motion as read reads. It's very difficult. Now, if we are simply to say, now that we understand that you are wanting the committee to look at the position, so that, and none of us would want these other employers to be using the sort of contracts or the lack of contracts which you have outlined, then we can go along with it. But that's not what's written in there. And I'm really worried about even agreeing to a motion like that, because what you're asking us to do is to insist on all people directly or indirectly employed who are either who for a couple of months are working, consecutive months are working, and then to offer them a contract on a minimum level. Now, I'm not even sure that we can do that to a contractor. And when we say a contractor, what do we mean? Do we mean, you've said indirectly employed staff. Is an indirectly employed staff somebody who is a consultant for instance, working for us? Is it a contractor working out, doing some work on the road for us? How far are we going to go? That's not what you meant, but that is the terms under which it is written. Now, are you prepared to remove the motion and instead put in that you are, in view of your concerns, which we all share, that you are willing to, for the select committee, if they are prepared to look at it, to look at it and then come back to council? If that's what you're trying to say, then that's what we would support. But as it is written, I'm afraid it doesn't seem to make any sense to us. Do you want to amend your motion? Can you amend it in the way that I'm suggesting, or would it have to be thrown out because of the wording of it? I don't know. Can we have perhaps some guidance on that?
councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair. I think the spirit of the motion is aimed at people working in the care sector, as the second part was done, so I'm sure you get that Bob. I was happy to second it on that basis purely because I've had first-hand experience of it too. The presentation that we had a few moments ago, actually it couldn't fail to make you smile or bring a lump to your throat or a tear to your eye, when you see that what a little bit of attention given to somebody who just wants somebody to, you know, to be there and chat to, love them, guide them, whatever, the joy that that brings to people. And I've said this in this room in the past, when I was out canvassing, you go to the pensioners' bungalows and you see at half past five in a semizine and the curtains are drawn because they've been put to bed at half past five. To me, I don't think that's cared, I think that's neglect. Absolute neglect. And when you look at the reasoning behind it is because these care workers are told you get 15 minutes with everybody and then you've got 10 minutes to get to the next one. If you're over, you'll be docked your pay, you won't be paid for going from one to the other. You know, what sort of a society have we created whereby we're allowing that to happen? And I think as a local authority, we probably could take a lead in it. We're the ones who commission these care companies. Going back, you know, 18 years ago, before I started working in the job that I'm in now, I worked for a company in Crickawall that prepared windows and doors. To get on a specification list for the local authority, you had to have set conditions, that you had to have ISO 9000, you had to have investors in people, you had to have a quality award. But surely 20 years on, we can still be saying to these care companies, well actually... you've got to treat your staff with some respect. Yeah, you've got to allow them to do their jobs, looking after the elderly residents in our county in a way that's an appropriate way to them and a way that is enhancing their lives, not putting them to bed at half past five because you've got to rush off fifteen minutes later to somebody else. And we as councillors have that, have that responsibility to bring these issues forward and, and say that. Bit disappointed Bob, I thought you'd have probably amended it yourself. You know, and if you want to do that, please do so, but I'm happy to support this in the, in the spirit that it's actually meant and anything that we can do, anything that we can do to stop these lousy practices. My daughter was an employee under those practices and she's now gone on to work for another care company, who I won't mention, who actually pay her a salary and don't worry if she's forty minutes with somebody or an hour because, okay, you're a little bit late going to the next one, but you spend the same time with them too. And I think as human beings, we have a right and a duty to stand up and say to these people, no, and if you don't like it, get out and we'll find somebody who will.
Councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you Chair. In the past, the select committees, particularly the Adults Select Committee have done thorough investigations. What we now tend to get is reports supplied to us without any input initially from any member of the committee to, if you like, enhance those reports. What I would like to see is going back to, if you like, the good old days where two or three members of the committee were actually part of the fact finding setup so that we know that we've achieved, we hope, we've achieved what we really want to see rather than being told, this is what you're going to get. Now, I could go along with the fact that the Adults Select Committee should go down those lines and I would be surprised if nobody in the, in the room disagrees with that. Thank you Chair.
Point of personal clarification, if I may. Point of personal clarification. I am agreeing with the, with the essence of what they are saying. That is not what the motion says. Will we allow or will you allow an amendment to the motion that does exactly what councillor Petruany and the other members are saying, which supports taking this to Adult Select Committee without the verbiage that goes before it so that they look at it and then come back for recommendations to council? Because none of us want the sort of practices which have obviously generated this motion in the first place.
Yeah, thank you Chair and I know quite recently, was it the last budget round or the one before past Peter can recall, but we actually accepted a pressure in that when we, when we addressed the position of minimum wage and contracts within our own authority, we did actually increase the budget to care providers to ensure that the same conditions applied within their staff. So I would be very interested to hear, certainly not in this chamber Dimitri, but I would be interested to hear just who it was and what the company was so that we can follow that up because as I say, we are funding them sufficiently for that not to happen.
Councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I agree. I really think we should follow this through because as you've just heard, it is against all the regulations, it is against Welsh Government advice. Incidentally, Welsh Government itself has voted at least six times against the outlawing of the zero rating, zero rating paid for, for workers. So it contracts, so it is, you know, it is an area which is quite confused. However, Monmashia are all for having fair play and it is known for its innovative approach, hence in our own workers we have, we have turning the world upside down and with our own workers it's Monmashia Project etcetera. So we will do all we can, we are doing all we can under the regulations specified by Welsh Government for commissioned providers to make sure that they are paying the right, providing the right contracts where possible. Don't forget, some people would prefer and choose to do zero rating, have zero rated contracts, but not all. It's something that we don't want, I agree. But we're all for change and we're all for doing everything we can to ensure fair play. So I agree with you wholeheartedly about it, but I would just like to reiterate that Adults Select have got it on their work programme. So, you know, your, your, your motion would be reinforcing that. Okay? Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Grokot.
Thank you Chairman. I, I wonder if I could help out my colleague councillor Petruany by proposing the wording of an amendment that I hope would find universal support in this chamber. And it's quite simply that in the first sentence of the amended report that you received last night, we simply add after, where it talks about the council, employed by the council, add the words in the care sector and then leave it unaltered apart from that addition.
Thank you for that. Is there a second of that? Yes, all right. Thank you councillor Petruany. Just let my colleagues just go. Bob, you can answer.
Um, I think that does, we, it take the, um, yes, I think we, we need to take the directly out as well. We're talking here about indirectly employed, um, because our own, our...
Are you all happy now to vote on that amendment? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Say again, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, councillor Brown.
Could I just have clarification about the actual wording of the amendment before we vote? Because I think there's been a suggestion of home care sector as opposed to care sector and possibly home care sector might be the best one to use in view of this being care at home. Thank you.
Now, I, I think if, if we are employing indirectly employing people in any area of social care and they are not getting the minimum wage and they are working such terrible conditions, then I think as a council we should oppose that. So I, I want it to remain as social care.
On that basis, can I please have a show of hands to agree that revised motion? Great, that's unanimous.
Chairman, fourteen point eleven, can I propose a closure to the motion then and can I sum up? I'm glad we all agreed. I think you've got the spirit of it, but you can't quite resist the amendment, but we're open to that. It's what's more important is tackling the, the practices that seem to be happening in our commissioned care providers. And I'm very interested what councillor Murphy said about the extra money. We have never opposed ever, since at least I've been leader, any extra money to social care, we've never challenged you on that. And to be fair, you have put extra money in social care, I think pretty much every year, if I'm not mistaken on that. And you won't get any problems from us from that perspective. I was a bit concerned, I think, and councillor Greenland can correct me if I got this wrong, and I think councillor Jones said it as well, that I don't know how we would enforce our commissioned providers to do this or something along that lines. You did, I swear you did, well, we give the contracts presumably. So we need to insist and be more forthright about the practices we expect. And I can't put it any more eloquently than councillor Williams put it on a human level. And I heard Welsh Government mentions and fine, mention them all away, but this is what we can do right here, right now as county councillors, not AMs. So let's do it and I'm glad you're with us.
Right. Our leader is going to, sorry, our leader, our chief executive is going to just correct us on where we are.
We should send him to North Wales more often. No, just procedurally, just to be clear that you're all clear before you vote. Councillor Grokot moved an amendment, you agreed it, that's now your substantive motion. Councillor Petruany has just summed up the substantive motion, the motion which is the same as the amendment that you agreed. Now you're about to vote on that substantive motion. Okay? You're all good with that? You know what you're voting on?
Can you all show your hands for the substantive motion? That's everybody. Our next item on the agenda is item six two and that's a notice of motion from councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you Chair and I've got no doubt that we will be told by Labour that the cuts in funding for local authorities in Wales are a direct consequences of reductions in funding from Westminster. I'm sure there's a lot of truth in that and I acknowledge that Wales has suffered less than authorities in England have. However, every council in Wales is crying enough is enough whatever their political persuasion. It's highly regrettable that despite an increase in funding of five point six percent, some one point two billion, that Monmashia along with a few others have had to rely on a minus one percent floor, having yet another cut of close to one million that sits alongside a massive rage of wage, pension and demographic pressures. Indeed, since two thousand and eight, seven hundred and seventy-five million has been cut from Cardiff Bay, however, nine hundred and seventy-five million has been cut from local government. This is, this has a massive input, impact I should say, on our budget setting. We're having considerable difficulty in closing the gap. We currently still have four point six million to find and this will inevitably impact on valued services that look to support and sustain our communities. We will inevitably come back to that during the budget debate in the new year. So what have they done with the money? Well, they funded a lot of tarmac, well, that's about all we're likely to see out of the increase in highway funding after the harsh winter and the hot summer. Most of the rest of the settlement, seven percent, has gone to that black hole known as the NHS, that all consuming money pit. There is no doubt, certainly in my mind, that the NHS needs more support in Wales as elsewhere in the, in the UK, but such an increase is counterproductive. And the increase in funding to the NHS is beyond the level that, that the NHS itself had anticipated or even asked for. After eight years of cuts where budget have fallen by a quarter, Welsh Government had many opportunities to have an imaginative approach with three hundred and seventy million of new monies coming from central government. The money needs to go to local authorities to fund preventative services to relieve the pressure on the NHS. Let's hope that Mark Drakeford's recent statement bears fruit, where he tended to suggest that there may be some more, more money coming. I hope he's right. This cut has put considerable pressure on this council. We now have that extra million to find on top of the gap that we are trying to close as I said earlier. Education has had a grant to service the teachers' pay increase. Great. However, that's not all we have had to find in education, as I'm sure councillor John will say. A grant tends to have a shelf life, although I acknowledge that this one will be in the settlement in nineteen twenty. Mister Chairman, the whole approach needs to change and reflect the flagship policies of prosperity for all and healthier Wales as well as others, not the least of which is the future generations' policies. This is a terrible provisional settlement that has been challenged by every council in Wales, the WLGA and every other group that you can think of. Welsh Government must have a rethink. I urge them and anyone who has any influence on them to consider very seriously the unnecessary impact on local authorities in Wales and Monmashia County Council in particular. As regards our situation at MCC, officers are working hard behind the scenes in bringing forward savings proposals and options to cabinet to consider ahead of the draft budget proposals being released for consultation and scrutiny in December. As in previous years, I welcome constructive proposals from members of all groups who wish to offer them up and urge anyone wishing to do so to do it as early as possible in the process so that we can give proper considerations to those proposals. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Is that motion seconded please? Councillor Greenland, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, of course we second, I would think there's probably going to be no abstentions let alone people voting against this motion because we all feel equally strongly about this. It was about three or four weeks ago, I think, that I attended a Welsh Local Government Association council meeting in Cardiff where the cabinet secretary came prior to him delivering his budget to speak about the budget. And to be honest, it left me speechless myself. He started off by going back as far as Margaret Thatcher's government and then he went on to John Major's government, from which he went on to David Cameron's government, blaming them all for the faith, for the position that he found himself in, forgetting and never mentioning once the budget, the governments of Tony Blair and of George Brown. And if you, Gordon Brown, even further back for him, of Gordon Brown. And if you remember, if you remember Gordon Brown was Prime Minister just before the crash, he was in the driving seat. And you remember his words? We will now see the end of boom and bust. So confident was he in the way that his government was managing the economy. And then look what happened. At the time, it seemed absolutely ridiculous that mortgages were being lent at a hundred and five percent of the value of a household to people at six times their salary levels. It was a crash waiting to happen and it happened. And of course, since then, Labour have enjoyed saying, oh, well, of course it's all down to austerity, the position we're in. No, it is not. It is down to mismanagements in the past. And of course, at that meeting that we were at, at the Welsh Local Government Council meeting, there was absolute union agreement between all leaders of whatever party and they, everyone spoke about the need for additional money for social care. Everyone said that you needed to fund social care as a preventative measure to try and reduce the money spent in the health service. We all agree that there has to be more money spent in the health service. Perhaps I ought to declare a personal interest here, but you, we all know that there needs to be extra money in the health service. But it is dishonest in the extreme to do what he has done and to rob other essential services run by local councils to fund that. This government now has the ability to raise taxes. Why then don't they do the honest thing and raise taxes to fund the National Health Service and give the proper money to local government to run their services, their valued services in social, including social care? You have to ask, you have to ask why? Why are they trying to starve local government of all their funding? What is the reason behind it? And I honestly believe this is a backdoor way of local government reform. Labour have been in power in this, in Wales for what is it, twenty years? They're a tired government, they've run out of ideas, they need support, but they now don't even get it from their own members. And following this budget, even the leader of Torvine... And following this budget, even the leader of Torvine, who speaks on finance on the WLGA, said this of the budget: "It is with deep regret that we have received today's provisional settlement. The wrong decisions have been taken in this budget." Why then was he doing it? Is he looking to starve local government and thereby get us to throw in the towel and by that means get the four local authorities that he's looking for, four Labour-controlled local authorities throughout Wales that'll be at their beck and call? Is this the real reason why he is ignoring the plea for finance to come properly into local government? I honestly believe it is, and I think it is despicable of the way he is doing it. And whether it makes any difference to this motion, I don't know. But it is time that we all in local government got up and spoke against the way that this government is mishandling the finances of Wales. The leader is not here today because he, with other leaders throughout Wales, will be discussing this budget settlement in North Wales tomorrow. And I can tell you that every leader of whatever political colour is furious about the way this government is mishandling the finances of Wales. I approve this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Sarah Jones, please.
Thank you, Chair. So quite clearly, good performance doesn't pay. We're one of the leanest, the most efficient councils in Wales. We have the lowest spend per head of the population, and yet we get year-on-year cuts at stark contrast to some of our neighbouring authorities. But I want to focus my comments and the reason why I fully support this motion on a couple of specific areas, some which fall quite closely under my social justice brief. The first, and councillor Murphy's already touched on, it's the Future Generations and Wellbeing Act. With the third budget now, this is the third Welsh Government budget that we've had since the Future Generations and Wellbeing Act has been brought into place. How robust has the cumulative impact assessment of this budget been? How much has the Welsh Government really, truly looked at the cumulative impact of the decisions it's making and the local government settlement it's putting in place? We know that if we look at the budget narrative which the Welsh Government has put forward, that it states that local government will benefit from other grants and other funding streams. Where are the calculations around this? What percentage of additional grants that local authorities get goes to each single local authority? I'd suggest that those local authorities that own a receipt of the lowest cuts have the greatest access to these grants. Again, Monmouthshire is a disadvantage. Again, the Welsh Government's budget narrative that has been published, it suggests that the Welsh Government will work with local authorities to mitigate or minimise impacts, thus accepting, and quite frankly, it's difficult not to, that there's going to be some severe impacts ahead. But how have they really engaged in this mitigation? And where is the evidence that this has happened in recent years? At what point have Welsh Government come to us as a council and proactively said, yes, you're going to be impacted, and we're going to work with you collaboratively to try and address this issue? I fear, again, this is just lip service by Welsh Government and it's effectively ticking a box when it comes to the Future Generations and Wellbeing Act and the impact of year-on-year cuts. And that brings me on to the next point around budget engagement and the scrutiny of financial spend by Welsh Government. At what process have we as councils been engaged and asked to contribute our views to this budget in the same way that we as a council ask for the views of all councillors here when we formulate our own budget? How have we been proactively engaged around this process? Again, it's murky, it's opaque, and it's difficult to challenge given the lack of clear accounting and lines within the Welsh Government's own budget. The other point I want to make, which I think is really important, again, that we consider, is that additional legislation that's coming forward and impacts on local authorities and where this budget needs to address that and actually take that into consideration, it clearly doesn't. I just take for one example the Public Health Act. Look at all those additional responsibilities that local authorities now have to deal with around things such as tattooing and intimate piercing, the enforcement of that and the licensing regime behind that. The local toilet strategy that's been brought forward, again, with no money behind it, but we have to comply as a local authority. Minimum unit pricing for alcohol, the illegal tobacco register, all of these additional responsibilities that local authorities have to deal with because of clearly devolved politics and the Wales Act. But where's the money that follows this? And clearly, it's not happening in this local government settlement. So finally, the last point I wanted to touch on, and councillor Green has made the point very articulately, is a clear message, and it's a message, I think, that we need to convey to our residents. This is a Welsh government that wants to see councils fail. It's because in doing so, it will allow for greater centralisation of our services and it will allow for reorganisation through the back door. And that's quite apparent, because I think most of us here would have seen that crude analogy by the local government minister, referring to Oliver Twist and suggesting that, I don't want to hear from councillors complaining, Wales doesn't need 22 councils. And why should that matter to us in this council? Why should it matter to our residents? Because the minister's arrogance, his failure to understand the important role that local services play and the local voice has, is going to increase, it's going to widen that democratic deficit that exists in our society, and the ability of our residents locally to affect and have an influence on the decisions and the things that matter most to them. So for me, this budget isn't just bad in terms of the financial impact, the undoubted financial impact it's going to have on us as a local authority. It's bad for democracy, and I think that's something that all of us in this chamber should be concerned about. It doesn't matter what part of the political divide you sit on.
You've silenced them, Sarah. Anybody else wish to contribute?
Councillor Pabir. Thank you, Mr Chairman. And can I thank the Cabinet Member for resources for bringing this motion to us this afternoon. The funding of local government in Wales, and particularly this council's revenue support grant, is a perennial headache, I think, for councillor Murphy. But given the Barnet consequential spend, there was earmarked for Wales potentially a golden light at the end of the tunnel before the Welsh Government's draft budget. I bet he didn't expect to be kicked in the teeth the way he has been by Welsh Government over the last month. Some might say the contribution made by the Cabinet Secretary for Public Services yesterday was just rubbing salt into those bleeding gums. But not wishing to sound like a Dickensian character, there is nothing in this world so irresistibly contagious as laughter and good humour. It was certainly a contemptuous laugh on my part, but nevertheless, a laugh at his good humour. Instead of deriding the sector as only he knows how, and he certainly has a penchant for disparage and parlance, why doesn't he fight for the sector around the Cabinet table? Why, in the light of a healthier Wales, is he not calling for parity of esteem with the NHS in order to deliver the seamless integration of care agenda that the government are looking for the public sector partners to implement? Why isn't he displaying the leadership in telling his party colleagues in senior positions in local government that the current funding formula is not fit for purpose? Because it's hamstringing local rural authorities like ours. The wider issue of the local government funding formula is one which has certainly vexed my colleagues on the Economy and Development Select Committee. We have asked for a wider member seminar with the WLGA to explain the elements of the funding formula to us as councillors. And particularly, as councillors of one of the most financially affected authorities in Wales, and I do hope the democratic services can facilitate that for us as soon as possible. The fact of the matter is, over the last eight years, Welsh Council's core funding has reduced by 22% after being adjusted for inflation. If you take out schools from that percentage, core funding has fallen by 35%. The reality is that the relatively protected NHS spend, which has risen by 21% over the same period, has come at the expense of our core council services, providing those services to some of the most vulnerable in our society. Yes, the health system is important, but local government provides valuable and vital services to residents too. Very often, it's those same people who are most vulnerable and need of support across a range of services to improve life chances that rely on local services the most. The fact that councils deliver more than 1,300 various statutory duties and responsibilities demonstrates how much we do as a sector. Why isn't that being valued around the Welsh Government Cabinet table? I just don't understand. What really amazes me, though, is how Welsh Government has completely ignored the fact that it's the local government sector that not only delivers the early intervention and prevention agenda in both health and education, but it's a principal vehicle for delivering the wellbeing of future generations legislation that the government wants to showcase on a global scale. I'm going to focus the rest of my contribution primarily on the social care agenda, but as the chair of governance in a school that has to sign off a deficit budget this year, the pressure on our education system is equally as alarming. Social care has been identified as a sector of national strategic importance by Welsh Government ministers, and prosperity for all has identified social care as one of its priority areas, with the ability to have the greatest potential contribution to long-term prosperity and wellbeing. And this comes at the same time as the parliamentary view into long-term future of health and social care in Wales reported the case for change is compelling, with a need to create a seamless healthcare system for the people of Wales, with the recommendations being taken forward through a healthier Wales. How can we create a sustainable and properly funded health and social care system which will be central to developing this new approach without fair and generous funding, particularly given the democratic pressures placed on the system and that those demographic pressures are only going to get more acute? The Wales Public Services 2025 report a delicate balance health and social care spending in Wales focused on the difficulties local authorities are already having keeping pace with spending. The report identifies that spending on social care for the over-65s is not keeping pace with the growth in the population for older people, and another acute area for our authority. The increasing over-65 population means that whilst day-to-day spending on local authority organised adult social care services has remained broadly flat in real terms, spending per older person has fallen by nearly 13% in real terms over the last five years in Wales, inevitably leading to impacts on services for vulnerable people. Spending per head would have to increase by at least 125 million, which is 24% 2016-17 prices, between 2015-16 and 2020-21, to return to the equivalent spend that it was in 2009-10, which amounts to a 2.5 year-on-year increase. The report complements the findings from the Health Foundation report, a path to sustainability, funded projections for the NHS in Wales to 2019-20, 2030-31, recognising the twin challenges of financial demand pressures faced by health and social care in Wales. The Health Foundation report also recognises that health of the population depends far more than just on the quality of healthcare services. Key determinants of health are largely outside the control of health services, and so the quality and spend on those social care services has been one of the strongest impacts on the demand for healthcare.
Can you wind it? Paul, your time is up.
While local government has, of course, welcomed recent funding that has been made available to social services from Welsh Government, like ICF funding, that has only been for specific pieces of work, and those new initiatives have been on short-term funding. You cannot run a robust and comprehensive social care system on grant funding. So to conclude, while the recent announcement of additional Barnet consequential money was a real opportunity to make systemic financial difference, I think the Welsh Government has certainly spurned that chance. It can make a change. It can make a change, it can change its mind in terms of making this final budget settlement at the end of December. The situation is, local government is unlike Oliver Twist after Moregru. It wants leadership from the highest level, and more importantly, it wants the recognition it deserves.
Councillor John, and I am timing you, councillor John.
No pressure. I've got some very real concerns about this budget and the implications that it's going to have for our schools here in Monmouthshire. Clearly, the Welsh Government's budget was not put together with the best interests of young people and children at its heart. It's not supportive of improvements in our schools. We've spoken many times in this chamber about the severe underfunding of Monmouthshire and how we're the worst-funded local authority in the country. For every one pound we receive from the Welsh Government, there are other authorities neighbouring us that get one pound sixty. Funding per head for Monmouthshire has now fallen below £1,000, the only authority to be below £1,000. On top of this, we've now got the biggest budget reduction of any authority next year. Our schools are also underfunded in terms of grant money. Across Wales, last year, Welsh Government dished out £133 million in education improvement grant, of which Monmouthshire received just 2.9 million, that's just 2%. Welsh Government distributed £91 million in pupil development grant last year, yet our schools just received £1.2 million, that's just 1.3%. Our secondary schools also continue to be impacted by the Welsh Government's decision to cut post-16 funding to the tune of £260,000. Now, all of us in this chamber want to see a well-funded NHS, free at the point of use, I'm sure. But it's so temec, it's almost become untouchable. The NHS should not be beyond criticism and scrutiny. It needs to become more efficient. Now, its funding has increased to over £8 billion, that's over 50% of the Welsh Government's budget. So clearly, any percentage increase in funding to the NHS will disproportionately impact on other areas. Now, how can we be confident at the moment that that £8 billion is spent wisely? Now, Sophie Howe said the other day, "The reality is that the NHS is sucking up an increasing share of the budget every year to treat illness, and this is at the cost of services which have a focus on keeping people well in the first place." And I think she's absolutely right, prevention is better than cure. While we should treat ill health, we need to do far more to prevent future ill health by tackling the causes of ill health: poverty, worklessness, pollution, lack of skills and qualifications. I'm afraid the Labour Party has got its priorities wrong. The party that once championed education, education, is cutting money that goes to schools. With an overall cut of 0.5% in cash terms to local authorities, more like 3% in real terms, it's highly unlikely that any Welsh council will be able to afford to protect school budgets in line with inflation. Now, I was proud that this financial year, despite significant cuts to our budget, we were able to protect and actually increase school funding. But what are we looking at for our schools next year? Across Wales, 40% of secondary schools are in a deficit position. Overall, secondary schools are in a collective deficit for the first time in a generation. In Monmouthshire, we know that a number of our schools began the financial year in a deficit, and we're working closely with them on recovery plans. We know that we're not alone in this. Councils across Wales, Labour-run, independent-run, where secondary schools are in a deficit. In Powys, an authority very similar to our own in geography, school deficits are in a considerably more challenging financial position, dwarfing some of the deficits we have here in Monmouthshire. I'm very concerned about what this budget will mean for pupils next year. We're facing a perfect storm. A funding gap between Wales and England per pupil. We know that in an average primary school of, say, 420 pupils, if that primary school is located in Wales, it's likely to be half a million pounds underfunded compared to an equivalent school in England. As I mentioned, we're the worst-funded local authority, we're facing the deepest cut of any council, we're underfunded in our share of grants, our schools are still struggling to deal with the impact of the post-16 cuts. And we're now also facing an increase in business rates on the two new schools in Monmouth and Caldercot to the tune of £170,000. We're looking next year at an increase in teachers' pensions of almost £800,000. And it feels really perverse that we need to find nearly a million pounds to put into the education system this year that won't have any benefit for any pupils in our schools. If schools are forced to make cuts, where can they go next? We could see class sizes going up, including at the foundation phase. Staff cuts, less money to invest in IT equipment and facilities. Less to spend on teacher training and staff professional development. You could see the curriculum contracting to the core. Subjects which enrich the lives of pupils like music, drama, modern foreign languages, art would be more likely to face cuts in order to protect statutory commitments. Now, I think it would be a travesty at a time when we're trying to ensure that vocational skills are properly recognised and that the curriculum remains broad, that students risk losing some of those opportunities. The Welsh Government talks about education as its national mission, but if that were true, the budget would reflect that. These Welsh Government cuts to education put that mission at risk and put the successful implementation of the new curriculum at risk. Now, we know that some pupils don't excel at English, maths or science. They may not be perhaps academically minded. And it's some of those extracurricular activities and enriching subjects which are particularly beneficial and helpful to them and help them to stay in school. Now, every pupil has a talent, but pupils are not the same. We need a broad curriculum which meets the needs of every young person. And I'm afraid this budget will not support vulnerable students. It won't support targeted intervention, nor will it support the funding of staff who... It won't support targeted intervention, nor will it support the funding of staff who support students with wellbeing and perhaps with, with mental health issues. We heard from Councillor Murphy earlier about the additional money that the Welsh Government has received from Westminster, and I'm sure if any members of the Labour Party did contribute to, to this debate, I don't know if you're going to shortly, perhaps you would say that this is the impact of decisions taken in Westminster. Well, actually, as Councillor Murphy said, the Welsh Government has received an increase in its funding of five point six percent, one point two billion pounds, and it's their decision as to how they've, they've allocated that money. Now, we all have a responsibility, I think, in this chamber to lobby Welsh Government about the impact that this budget could have, and I hope that Labour colleagues will work with us on this. I can promise every young person and parent in this county that however bad the settlement is that we receive from the Welsh Government, we will do our best to prioritise education. I am quite prepared to support difficult and unpopular decisions if it means we can direct more money into schools and ensure that young people in Monmouthshire continue to receive the very best start in life. So I strongly urge the Welsh Government to revise this budget, or it will negatively impact on standards and prevent some young people from achieving their potential, and I'm afraid the effects of this could be felt for generations.
Councillor, Councillor Petroni.
Chairman, thank you. The Conservatives have gone anti-austerity on us. Thank you. It took you eight years, but you're finally on our side. Couldn't disagree with much of that. We are, you're with us on anti-austerity now, good. You're with us on the importance of local government, good, and now you want to increase taxes for social care. I swear that was the, the intention from the deputy, so they want to increase taxes and increase spending. Come join, I'll get some membership forms, do you want to sign up? It's, it's brilliant, I, I can't say much to that, I really welcome everything you've just said. I, it's perfect, it's beautiful, I couldn't have written it better myself. I, I just want to go through a couple of the points, couldn't agree with you more, Councillor Pavia, we need a, a national care service, totally agree with you, funded by the social care levy, needed more, we need more money in social care. Local government needs to be funded properly, totally agree. Does Monmouthshire deserve a million pound cut? No, it absolutely doesn't, doesn't, we don't believe in austerity, this side does not and has not for eight years, it's your side that's done this sort of just sudden new like turn of, this is really going to be bad, it's like, yeah, we've been telling you for eight years, this is going to be really bad. And, and I, I, I hope this message spreads, I hope it spreads to England, where your Conservative colleagues have cut local government, and I, I felt compelled to say this because it was like a grand conspiracy to limit, make these centralised councils. Well, I wonder what they're doing in England, where they've cut local government spend in England, Conservatives cutting their own councils by fifty percent in eight years, fifty percent, ticking out seven billion pounds of social care money in English local authorities. And let's look at what they do to their own councils in England. Northamptonshire went bankrupt and the Conservatives voted to abolish themselves, I mean, they're on something there, they're on to something, I like them. The Conservative leader said, we couldn't cope with the level of cuts anymore, we couldn't agree anymore. The other Tory councils in trouble, Somerset in the massive financial trouble, in deficit by seven point seven million, Lancashire in, in a shortfall budget deficit of ninety-seven million pounds, both councils Tory, both councils closing children's centres, cutting school funding. It's awful, I totally agree with you, Richard, absolutely spot on with everything you said, we need more money to our schools. And I, what happened to you, what's happened in the last six weeks? You were talking about fiscal and all this, and the Tories were doing a great job, and now you're anti-austerity. I, I welcome it, I'll buy you a drink later, I, I'll buy you a drink. Thank you for doing it, we're generous, we're socialists, we, we, we agree, we agree. So, I can't, I can't, I can't agree more, there's not going to be much debate, they are anti-austerity, so are we, we're anti-austerity, they're pro-taxation to fund social services properly, so are we, brilliant. I beg to close the motion and put it to the vote, we agree.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy, do you wish to wind up?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just pick up on one or two of Dimitri's points, only to, only to underline a couple of things. As I said earlier, all councils agree that this should be challenged, and clearly we need to, to support our colleague councils in, in that challenge. I did say, Dimitri, that Wales had suffered less than England, I acknowledge that, and the point I did make was that whilst Westminster has cut Welsh Government by seven hundred and seventy-five million since two thousand and eight, Welsh Government have cut us by nine hundred and seventy-five million. So, you know, they, if, if we're going to start throwing, they, they joined in on that. I really don't think there's anything else to say, I think there's a lot of very valid points being made here, and I'd be interested to see the vote.
Thank you very much. Those in favour of the motion please show.
Chairman, may I call for a recorded vote, please?
Hold on, hold on, nine people have to support you, Bob, if you want to do that. Matthew, have you got your list ready?
Chair, is a point, chair, is a point of order, should that come before the motion, that request?
Do you have a second, Rob, presumably you did?
Yeah.
Yeah, they all stood, yeah.
Right, listen carefully, should they decide what you're going to do.
Councillor Petroni?
For the motion, happily.
Okay. Councillor Becker?
For the motion.
Councillor Leitbraith, apologies. Councillor Brown?
For the motion.
Councillor Clark?
For.
Councillor Davis?
For.
Councillor Devi?
For.
Councillor Dimmock?
For.
Councillor Easton?
For.
Councillor Edwards?
For.
Councillor Evans?
For.
Councillor Greenland?
For.
Councillor Grokut?
For.
Councillor Guppy?
For.
Councillor Harris?
For.
Councillor Higginson?
For.
Councillor John?
For.
Councillor, Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones?
Oh, sorry, yes, Councillor David Jones.
For.
Councillor Laura Jones?
For.
Councillor Penny Jones?
For.
Councillor Sarah Jones?
For.
Councillor Brian Jones?
For.
Councillor Jordan?
For.
Councillor Lane?
For.
Councillor Murphy?
For.
Councillor Pavia?
For.
Councillor Powell?
For.
Councillor Pratt?
For.
Councillor Roden?
For.
Councillor Smith?
For.
Councillor Strong?
For.
Councillor Thomas?
For.
Councillor Trihan?
For.
Councillor Watts?
For.
Councillor Watkins?
For.
Councillor Webb?
Four hundred.
Councillor Williams?
Seven! Four.
And Councillor Woodhouse.
Four.
Thank you.
Do you want to declare the result then?
Yes, the motion's carried.
Right, we go on to item six-three, and this is a motion from Councillor Alan Davies. Councillor Davies?
How long, how long have I got? You, you'll be absolutely delighted to know that I have got no intention of amending my motion, but I can't speak for Councillor Greenland, of course. Monmouthshire County Council currently spends nearly one hundred million pounds on goods and, goods and services per annum. It doesn't take a genius to work out that the two and a half percent reduction in that could yield us well over two million pounds worth of savings. The Economy and Development Select Committee identified procurement as a potential source of savings for the council in early two thousand and seventeen. Several subsequent meetings and discussions have taken place since that time, which in my opinion have served to confirm the need to review our procurement, procurement systems and procedures. Managing our procurement system effectively can yield considerable expenditure savings. In one company I work for, multi-billion pounds of savings were realised as a result of analysing spend by supplier and identifying savings. Savings can be achieved in a number of ways, either by identifying cheaper but effective alternatives, by re-examining contract agreements to ensure that they represent value for money, and by working with suppliers to jointly identify cost-reduction initiatives. It is also essential that you can accurately interrogate your accounting and ordering systems, plus you need a trained professional procurement resource in place. And I think in terms of resource, we have two people in our procurement department, which is obviously not enough in the current situation. Those experts professional should be given specific instructions to identify savings without adversely affecting service provision. The principle must be that this is not a one-off exercise, but that the new system will enable continuous monitoring and identification of budgetary saving opportunities. If members go online and search for procurement savings by councils, you will see that many councils in the UK have already identified procurement as a key element of their cost-saving strategy. Many are well advanced in the review of their systems, and many have already made very substantial savings. Currently, we do not have the internal resource needed to carry out a comprehensive review of our procurement system. Therefore, if we are to take full advantage of the very significant savings that such a review can yield, we need to ensure that a new, suitably qualified resource is put in place in order to carry out a full, independent evaluation and to identify key areas where savings can be made. To know where money can be saved, you need to know where it's spent. Currently, the system in use in MCC does not lend itself to detailed interrogation, and putting it politely is in dire need of significant upgrading. Spend and contract information is inappropriately classified for procurement purposes, distributed across multiple systems and difficult to access. If we fix that, then we are well on the way to having the visibility we need to respond to the challenge of delivering procurement savings and improving efficiency. There are some key questions that we need to ask ourselves when reviewing our procurement system. Do we have any spending mapping system in place? How much does our organisation spend and who is it spending it with? What is our unit cost for purchase items and how much does that vary? How much of our spend is associated with the top ten suppliers? How many suppliers do we have supplying the same or similar items? Do we have the right balance between short and long-term saving initiatives? Do we link the forecasting, budgeting and procurement savings programme? How effective is our current procurement system at achieving savings and improving service delivery effectiveness? Are we measuring, tracking and reporting realised benefits? Are our savings initiatives focused on unit cost or total cost of ownership? Do we understand the difference between needs and wants? Are we a collaborative client for our suppliers? Are we working together to take costs out? We need to realise the value of our contracts by managing them and a suitable strategy for our suppliers. Are we getting what was promised when we signed our contracts? Have we integrated our strategic suppliers into, into our long-term planning and reporting processes? Are we addressing our transactional process issues? Is there a documented procurement vision, objectives, strategies and performance scorecard? My impression from the discussions that I've had with various members and officers, that the answer to many of these questions is no, we haven't or no, we don't. As members will note, there are a considerable number of questions we need to address and a considerable amount of work we need to carry out. Firstly, we need to upgrade our current systems in order that we can easily interrogate it and identify potential savings. Secondly, we need a suitably qualified resource to carry out a detailed review of our current procurement practices. There is no doubt in my mind that by investing in these two areas, we can make very significant savings. The question members need to consider is not can the authority afford, afford to do this, but can the authority afford not to do this? I therefore urge members to back the motion so that the necessary, necessary steps can be taken as soon as is practically possible. The sooner we start, the sooner we can start benefiting from substantial cost-saving opportunities that I have no doubt exist. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Grokot?
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to second this motion. I think members have heard how with a little investment, we could potentially reap considerable rewards. Earlier this afternoon, we heard invitation to members on this side of the House to join in budget preparations, and I hope that invitation was meant with sincerity and that we can take it up. I'd like to almost reciprocate that invitation now and invite members opposite to consider this very sensible suggestion for making considerable savings and joining with the Labour Party in voting for it.
Thank you. Councillor Phil Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I've got no issue whatsoever with Councillor Davis putting this motion to council, despite the fact that we've proactively met with him and Councillor Pavia, I believe Councillor Petroni has been in on, on some discussions, I welcome it, and in fact, and setting politics aside, it's excellent to see what, the, the level of constructive input, particularly from the Economy and Development Select Committee around our procurement approach. They're supporters of the revised procurement strategy and are keen for us to accelerate it. They've held some very useful discussions, brought in outside experts to, to comment on approach and to give some ideas as to what we should do. Procurement in this authority as, as traditionally, or was traditionally supported by the Welsh Purchasing Consortium, which was wound up unfortunately because Welsh Government created the National Procurement Service. That was far more expensive, far more unwieldy, didn't really achieve anything, and of course is now being wound up because they've realised that it wasn't achieving anything. The damage has actually been done because the WPC had the structure in that everybody, well, just about every authority in, in Wales belonged to it, and everybody shared the expertise of their, of officers. So it automatically gave us a far greater procurement footprint than, than is apparent from the fact that we've only got two members of staff in the, in the procurement department. At that time, Cefiri, for instance, had twenty-two, I think it's eleven now, but, you know, nevertheless, it was twenty-two. So, we, when we, particularly when we were looking at the future Monmouthshire work that Rob O'Dwyer was, was heavily involved in, and he was previously the lead officer within the section that procurement came under, we identified an awful lot of, of the work, and that was, what, some two years ago, that Councillor Davis is, is talking about now. We did create a network internally of some seven additional people who would have procurement as a large part of their, of their responsibility. So, we have in fact been doing something about this and have been for quite some time. But the ongoing constructive challenge and scrutiny is very much welcomed. I recognise the need to suitably resource the procurement activities and such as to enable it to progress the revised procurement strategy that was approved by Cabinet in July, and to unlock the value and savings that will benefit to the authority and the wider Monmouthshire economy. I'm not sure that those savings are quite as dramatic as, as been indicated this afternoon, but where we can make them, we certainly will. Our core and immediate focus will be and is reviewing, enhancing and streamlining existing procurement systems and processes, continue to further interrogate and analyse spend and activity data, to take forward a whole authority approach to unlocking value from its procurement activity through targeted training, updated guidance and support, and to target dedicated procurement resources in areas that offer greatest and most immediate opportunity. We are in fact currently finalising a report and proposition for Cabinet to consider that will ensure that the council has regard to the resources that it needs in place to take forward and... take forward and unlock value in its procurement activities. So the inference in the preamble from councillor, excuse me, councillor Davis, was that we're not actually doing anything. He knows perfectly well that we are doing quite a considerable amount, and I look forward to bringing that strategy to Cabinet, which will make our current progress very much clearer.
Thank you. councillor Greenland.
Thank you, Chair. Yep, we've just heard from councillor Murphy. We're doing this, and it's right and proper that we do, and of course, all sides, it looks, support this. Do you know, I've had a bit of a withdrawal system over the last six months or so. I haven't had the opportunity to bring an amendment to a motion, so I'm going to change that now. And it is in recognition that this is what we want to do, and this is what we are doing. So it's a fairly simple amendment, and the beginning of the motion would read that this council continues the urgent action it is taking to provide, and it goes on from there exactly as it is written. So it's just a recognition that we are already taking this urgent action, which it seems to me all sides of the chamber think is absolutely right and necessary. So that's my amendment, and I will have a second. There we go. There we are, look at that. Cross-party unity, this is wonderful.
Is there any desire for debate as we've got unity here? All agree? Put your hands up. Right, well done. That sorters the meeting down. Back to the substantive motion. You're all happy to agree that as well.
That can't be recent, how to indicate.
Yeah, you're happy not to talk, Tony, aren't you? You are happy not to talk. You'd like to speak. Go on then.
Thank you, Chair. This matter of procurement has come before Audit Committee on many occasions where there are shortcomings in the procurement process, and I think that this motion might, in its wording, reduce the numbers of procurement failures or procurement hiccups that do come to Audit Committee, because it is a concern that we have seen for quite a while. And I would hope that this motion would help resolve, as they call them, those hiccups. And on another matter, could you take my question first, please? I need to go back to Chepso, my brother knows Diane.
When we get to questions, Tony, yes. Right, okay, that finishes that one. I was remiss, yeah, can you please vote now on that substantive motion? Thank you. I was remiss on item six four. I'm now going to declare an interest because my business pays business rates.
Just to help. Clearly, whether you declare an interest is always a matter for you. All I would say is that if I were running a business in Monmouthshire and I had a property and I was paying on domestic business rates, I would be declaring a prejudicial interest right now. So you might want to reflect on that.
Chairman, if I may on this one, for me personally, and it'll apply to councillor Harris behind, because we sit on the valuation tribunals, obviously we have an interest in this, but I'm not going to get involved in any comment on the motion other than to make an opinion, sorry, give some information on it.
It's going to be presented by councillor Greenland.
It's remiss of me, I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, I have a non-prejudicial interest. Thank you.
Well.
Thank you, councillors. We move on to item six point four, and as you've just heard, in the absence of councillor, oh, we have one more declaration of interest. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item six point four, and as you've just heard, in the absence of councillor Fekins, councillor Greenland is going to put this motion to council.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice-Chair. Yes, councillor Fekins was well placed to put this motion. He is representing Monmouth, and he would have many traders in the centre of Monmouth in his ward, and he well knows the issues that they are facing. But obviously, as also the cabinet member responsible, so do I. The recent revaluation of business rates which took place throughout Wales about two years ago was a desktop exercise, nothing more than that. And as a result of that desktop exercise, it resulted in the huge increases in business rates or the valuations for rating purposes that resulted in this eleven percent increase across the board for Monmouth. But that figure actually masks some huge increases, some increases which were over a hundred percent on the basis of a desktop exercise. We challenged it at the time, and we were in fact given a fast-track system in Monmouthshire so that those businesses affected could take advantage of a quicker decision. But I think what this whole process has shown up is that the business rate system is shot. It is no longer fit for purpose. And can it be that Cardiff should see a ten percent reduction in their business rates while Monmouthshire sees an eleven percent increase? Anybody could see that that is not a fair system. And as our traders continue to suffer under the added, the issues that obviously coming through internet trading, I think it is quite clear that a system needs to be put in place that acknowledges this change in trading patterns over the last few years. This is a devolved issue for Welsh Government. They have got the power to change the system, and I think they certainly should do. Now, we have made representations in the past to the Cabinet Secretary, who doesn't seem to be prepared to even consider a change in the system. Perhaps if he represented an area other than Cardiff, he might think differently. But the fact is that the future of our town centres is in jeopardy at the moment. It is not entirely due to the business rate system. After all, business rates is based on rents. Rental values of properties are meant to be reflected in the business rate system, but it is no longer the case that businesses that can afford to pay business rates are necessarily paying the highest rents. If you look at large out-of-town businesses, look at Amazon, for instance, the way that they occupy huge areas of ground, and yet their business rates are a fraction of a small town centre or city centre business. It is not fit for purpose any longer. And I think that we need a national campaign, and I think we in Monmouthshire should be heading that campaign, to persuade the government to use their new powers of tax raising to find a fairer way of taxing businesses. I'm not in favour of additional taxes, before you jump up on that side and say that I am. But I am in favour of fairer taxes that reflect the current trading conditions for our traders in particular in Monmouthshire. But I know that in other areas of Wales, such as the Vale of Glamorgan, they're suffering as well in the same sort of way. So I would hope that on this again, we will have unanimous support across the board for this motion, and I put it to council.
Thank you. I have several councillors who wish to speak. Do I have a second or first? Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy. Right. Councillor Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to say from the outset that I am a member of the Valuation Tribunal, and I've been a member of that for some twenty-two years, and I do chair valuation tribunals, and I've dealt with them from corner shops to steelworks. And just to add to that, the steelworks took eight days of my time, which is all part and parcel of the process.
You told us you worked there for thirty years.
Oh, no, I went there.
All right.
So you're talking about the effect of the Welsh Government revaluation of business rates. It's happened in England as well, with the exception that in England, they decided to delay the implementation of the revaluation, where Wales took it from a particular date. And councillor Greenland mentioned about the last revaluation took place in 2015, and it was put into practice in 2017, and that's quite correct. And I don't disagree with anything here which councillor Fekin is saying, and the competition of internet trading companies and all that sort of stuff, it does put pressure on individual traders. But he goes on to say, you can't be right, the ratable values of retailers in Cardiff have shown almost ten percent average decreases, whereas those in Monmouthshire have shown increases. I'm not going to comment on that, because it's not within, I dare not, and I don't have an opinion on it either. Because when I conduct a tribunal, I take evidence, and from the evidence I take, I and colleagues that I have make a decision ultimately. So I'm not going to go into that. But I think that, to be honest with you, I think that this motion by councillor Fekin, I mean, it's not for me to say whether it should succeed or whether it should fail, and I'm not going to take part in it either, in the vote, if it goes to a vote. But I think it's a matter of, for my part, that councillor Fekins needs to look at other situations in relation to ratable values. I did say that the English Government applied the revaluation but failed to carry it out at a particular point in time that they said they would. The Welsh Government did, and as a consequence of that, there'd be many tribunals held where different businesses and indeed residents of properties have appealed their ratable values. I can't say any more than that, but it's a situation that I don't think is quite correct in what councillor Fekin is saying. And he goes on, he says, council calls the Welsh Government with its new taxation power to abolish the outdated business rate system and replace it with a system that is fair to all, gives out ten town centres a hope into the future. Well, if that's the case, I think, you know, if the English Government introduced new legislation relative to business rates and so on, then the Welsh Government may well follow suit. But the Welsh Government, up to a point, do adapt to suit their own circumstances. So as I say, I'm not going to take, I declared the interest, it is personal, no more than that. I'm not going to take part in the vote, because to do that would show that I'm not impartial, if I put it that way. I'm just making a point of how the system works. And I know there's certain information going to come forward, and it's going to be interesting.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Business rates are an outdated tax that penalises against investment in bricks and mortar. It is right that this motion is considered and supported. You only have to look at our high streets to see the issue that will not go away. We know that Wales has one of the worst shop vacancy levels in the whole of the UK, with one in eight shops lying vacant. The footfall last month was down a whopping seven percent across the Welsh high streets. Action is most definitely needed, and reform of this outdated tax is the way to do it. At a time when more people are choosing to shop online, the dilemma for shops and retailers whether to continue to invest in the physical store propositions or move their operations online, with the inevitable impact this has on local communities and local economics. Councillor Taylor and I have seen shops close in Mega Square as a result, and only yesterday a local shop in Esk announced that they would be shutting down and moving its activity online. This seems to be a daily occurrence, and we saw in national news today. A move in, sorry, and it's shutting down, a move into its activity online. It seems, sorry. Government to stop this downward trend by demonstrating business confidence and giving a firm commitment to reform rates. I want to see vibrant high streets, we all know the benefits this brings, not just in terms of economic benefit, but the positive effects socially and on wellbeing. It encourages people to get out of their homes and see people. I welcome this motion and urge decision-makers to consider reform of an out-of-date tax system that is not fit for purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can you turn your mic off? Thank you. councillor Watkins.
Thank you. The Liberal Democrats firmly support this motion, not least because it's one of our flagship policies. So Vince Cable put forward his proposal to actually have a commercial landowner levy to replace outdated, outmoded business rates. This current system clearly supports the big enterprises, people such as Amazon, who get away with paying next to nothing. This way, we would actually tax the landowners and not the tenants, which would actually then support small and medium enterprises, taking them out of taxation. So yes, totally, we support the motion, we do think it is time to move, and we would warmly support any moves which we can get to try and get our high streets more vibrant again. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to know that members on that side of the chamber are still happy to not let facts get in the way of their opinions. Long may it continue, I'm sure it will. I have two documents here that I'm going to be quoting from. One is from the Valuation Office Agency that's independent of the Welsh Government, which is the agency that sets the rating values. The Welsh Government just puts the multiplier on to get the final figure. And the other one is a Welsh Government document, Non-Domestic Rates, High Street Rates Relief in Wales, 2018-19 guidance. So we'll have a look at both of those. As I mentioned already, it's a Valuation Office Agency that assesses the ratable values. And what it says in this document is, revaluation is done to maintain fairness in the system by redistributing the total amount payable in business rates reflecting changes in the property market. Revaluation does not raise extra revenue overall. So keep that in mind there. And it says, main findings on the non-domestic rating changes in ratable values, rating lists England and Wales, 2017 revaluation. After revaluation, the total ratable value for England increased by nine point six percent. In Wales, the total ratable value fell by two point nine percent after revaluation. Keep that in mind as well. This is an official document here. It then looks at revaluation of ratable properties in Wales by sector, and it says the retail sector in the 2017 revaluation had a decrease of eight point five percent. Industry had a decrease of four percent. Offices had a decrease of six point six percent. Others had an increase of four point five percent. But overall, it's a decrease of two point nine percent. So there we are, there's the facts by the Valuation Office Agency. And then the guidance from the Welsh Government on High Street Rates Relief in Wales, 2018-19, states it will be for local authorities to determine how they wish to administer the rate relief scheme to maximise take-up and the rate relief scheme to maximise take-up and minimise the administrative burden for rate payers and for local authority staff. And there we are, I rest my case there. But it's fascinating, I, I know we've got it in for the Welsh Government, but to blame the Welsh Government for changes in shopping habits and internet trading is, is getting a bit rich. So once again, get the facts right. It's Welsh Government down here, it's the Valuation Office Agency that sets the ratable value and it's the Welsh Government that applies the multiplier. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair. Very interesting motion and it requires a very serious response. I'll do my best. Business rates, I mean, everybody knows that taxation has to fund public services. So if you want public services, they've got to be funded somehow. The larger companies, I mean, somebody mentioned Amazon earlier on, probably one of the ones who were responsible for the demise of the high street in a big way. Maybe if they could actually get them on a UK level to pay their corporation tax, they might be able to distribute the funds a little bit easier, along with Google and Starbucks and the like. Business rates, I mean, I don't understand massively the workings of how this worked out and who paid more of it. But I was talking to a cafe owner in Abegavenny who, who did have a massive increase. But he also said it wasn't just the increase, it was the fact that his business was taken as a different type of business to the restaurant next door to him, which meant that his increase was bigger and they had a decrease, even though his place was smaller than theirs and operated for different hours and in a different sort of sector. So maybe the whole system is at fault. Maybe the whole thing needs some sort of review. There was an interesting article on the radio when I was driving in today and it was called, Please Stop Blaming the Internet. There are many reasons why the high street is in demise. Just take Abegavenny again. We've seen the demise of Burton's, we've seen the demise of New Look. Going back a year or two, we saw the demise of Woolworths. And there are many reasons for this. It's not just all about business rates. And I think we should be looking holistically at all the issues that our high street is facing. The actual offer, Debenhams is the latest today. And I mean, Debenhams, poor old Debenhams, they only made thirty-three million last year. So they're talking about closing fifty stores and laying off four thousand staff because they only made thirty-three million. To me, that's a decent profit. But when you start talking about the demise of the high street, there are massive issues. In Abegavenny for many, many years, the actual rents that rich landlords are charging people to rent out a unit is obscene, without talking about the business rates on their own. High street footfall is down. Maybe we helped it a bit by putting Morrisons in town, maybe we didn't, I don't know. All the intent is fine now is that people do park in Morrisons and have a wander up the street, which is good. But the, the whole system, I think, is probably broken. And I, I wouldn't have no qualms in supporting this motion, it talks sense. However, when you start talking about abolishing the rate system as a fix for all for the high street, I mean, it's just not going to happen, is it? Let's be fair. You have to take an approach of everything that these high streets are facing. The only growth in the high streets is coffee shops and charity shops. And charity shops, everybody don't pay business rates, is that right? That's right. But, and for anybody in here to sit here and rue the demise of the high street and then go home and order something off Amazon, well, that's just ridiculous. And how many people in here do not order off Amazon? There ain't going to be many, is there? Yeah, there you go. Harmful. Harmful if all the IT literate people. But, but let's be fair, everybody does it. It's quicker, it's more convenient. You can do it sat in the chair at nine o'clock on a Sunday night and, and it's in your house the following morning. So it's the convenience of it as much as the cost. But if we can, can we not take a look at the whole package that these people are facing rather than just focus on one? We cut back on the, the money for putting aid boards and tables out. We, we said, decided, oh, we wouldn't do that because it was too expensive and it was a burden on them. Well, I mean, you did propose it in the first place. But that's been cut back. But as Phil always says to us, where does the money coming from instead? As yet, I'm not sure where the money that we were going to raise from that is coming back from. That and the number eleven bus or whatever it was. When we decide that we're not going to make these cuts, where does the money come from instead? It must have to come from somewhere or we're at a deficit straight away. But let's have an holistic approach and let's look at the whole system instead of just a particular part of it.
Thank you. Councillor Betroney?
Yes, thank you Chair. But I mean, I would, I get the sentiment of the, the motion, but it's just, it's, it's almost under, it's, it's sort of, it is party politics and I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. But, you know, it's, we're all in a political chamber, but it talks a bit of nonsense about, you know, the high street is changing rapidly and to say that's business rates, maybe business rates does need to be reformed, but I didn't hear particularly apart from the Liberals to be fair, I didn't hear anything about what reform that would be from, from the motion, from councillor Greenland. I heard a lot about reform, but not what reform would be. What kind of revenue would, are we talking less revenue, in which case, what are we cutting? I mean, it's, it's sort of pie in the sky stuff, this. And, and to think, even if in a, in a magical world, we would somehow scrap business rates in its entirety, which I believe brings in a billion pounds to the, to the Welsh Government, I'm happy to be corrected on that. To think that will then suddenly trouble Amazon and then stop might slightly dent, but to stop that surge in internet growth, I, I think it's, I think it's just out of date. I think it's all out of date, that kind of thinking. It's very, it's very old-school conservatism, you know, and I appreciate that's what some of you are. But that is, it's completely outdated and I respect councillor Watkins, at least that, it's a policy. I mean, the landowning policy, it's a, it's a policy and I like that, I like that, it's not bad. Right, I might take it. But also, it, you know, it doesn't even reflect the reality of what the Welsh Government is trying to do, you know. It does want to support small businesses, you're right, it is very critical. So that's why the Welsh Government has introduced the Street Rates Relief Scheme, which is unique, unique on these aisles. And it gives two hundred million pound support every year to small businesses in Wales, helping more than seventy percent businesses across Wales after revaluation. It recognised that many businesses in Wales, including Malmesha, were hard done by. There's no doubt about it, that's not even an argument. There was a lot of complaint, particularly from your side of the political wing, and the Welsh Government listened and you still have a part. It listened, it put two hundred million pounds in to support them. And it's a permanent business relief scheme. And I know it's working because I had a small business, I was talking to a small business owner in my ward, she said to me, oh, you know, what can you do to help? And I said, have you applied for the rate, rate relief scheme? She said, what? She wasn't even aware of it. Maybe that's local councils' fault and Welsh Government's fault. But I think that's far more constructive about offering what to businesses presently here, what is available to them, rather than sort of say, we need reform, business rates are bad, retail, high streets are dying and it's all internet and if we just reform some form of reform of business rates, we'll, we'll stem it. That's, that really is pie in the sky. And I'm sure you can do better than that. I'm sure you can. But this motion really needs some serious rethinking.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes, thank you Chair. Can I just enlighten councillor Betroney on that, that last point? The business rate relief scheme, nobody had to apply for it. Everybody who qualified for it, we gave it to them automatically.
Point correct, that's not true. When I rang the, I've even got the emails proving it. Were dispatchable, eligible? I got, responded yes. Did I say, have they got their business relief? No, we'll apply it now.
Well, that must have been a nicer case. The policy of this council was that everybody, everybody got it automatically without having to apply.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Pratt?
Thank you very much, Chairman. On this side of the chamber, we know that we can only deliver efficient public services if we have a vibrant economy. And once again, the inequality of business rates is another example that the Labour Government in Cardiff Bay are not on the side of the business community. Let's not forget, it was this council that drove the city deal with the semiconductor plant, not the Labour councils that shied away from it.
Is that an official Conservative line? Is that your line? That Labour councils had nothing to do with this?
I didn't say they had nothing to do with it. I said that we, we were the ones that pioneered it and pushed it forward. Don't try and skew my words councillor Betroney. I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Right, before I ask councillor Greenland for closing remarks, anybody else wish to speak? Right, councillor Greenland?
Thank you. Nobody expects this to be a complete answer to our town centres. That is ridiculous. The town centres are, have many, many more problems than this. And neither is anybody suggesting that there is likely to be a change in internet trading. I believe that we actually need to look very carefully at the future for our town centres and we as a council need to be thinking about how we can change so that we can recognise the changes in trading and look for a new future to our town centres. And that's something that is under active discussion at the moment. But you've got to start somewhere. And most definitely, the issue for businesses that have suddenly, within a matter of months, been given these large extra bills, these, this is a real concern to businesses. Businesses plan years in advance. This came upon them with no more than a few months' notice. And they are such high levels of increases for many of them that they simply cannot deal with them. And it is a devolved matter. Councillor Higginson said, well, look, let's wait and see what England does. No, this is a devolved issue.
Could I say, I didn't say wait and see what England does. The Westminster Government took a lead on it and they stated what, what they wanted to introduce. All I said is, Welsh Government introduced it without any delay and the English Government didn't.
I think you were suggesting that if we wait and see what England does and then do something. What I'm saying is this is a devolved issue and that Wales has the ability to take a lead. And why not take a lead where it believes that something is, is going wrong? And I think that the, the remarks that we've been, that we've heard across the board seem to generally indicate that members believe that this system is wrong. And, and undoubtedly, I, I feel that it most certainly is. I agree with the views about Amazon and corporation tax. Yes, they seem to be able to skirt around paying proper corporation tax in this country as many other large concerns do. And that is something that governments have tried to deal with time and again. Councillor Williams mentioned about the issue when he was talking to a restaurant and a pub in Abegavenny. And one of the reasons why I'm so against this rate increase, part of the fact that it was a desktop exercise, is because the Valuation Office themselves told us that they were targeting hospitality businesses. Because they felt, they just felt that maybe their rates weren't high enough. So when they looked at the desktop exercise, they looked at, at those businesses in particular. And that's exactly what they told us in a meeting. That is exactly what they told us in a meeting. It is an independent organisation, but it is, it is nevertheless the Welsh Government that has the ability to say whether this, this system of business rates continues or not. And they are the government in control and it's no good washing your hands and saying, well, it wasn't us that said it, it's the independent body. If they're not, if, if the principle of rates is a principle for the Welsh Government, that is a principle for the Welsh Government and it is in their power to do something about it, not the independent panel that is set up. So I, I've, I've heard what members have said opposite, but I am absolutely certain that we need to begin by focusing on the problems of businesses in town centres and on this very real and immediate problem that they have of business rates. And I would ask councillor to support the motion.
Thank you. And we have the motion put by councillor Greenland, seconded by councillor Murphy. Can I ask for all in favour? Okay.
Madam Chair, could it be noted that I didn't, I didn't, I'm not going to vote on this and I, I claim my reasons for that.
One abstention?
Same again, Madam Chairman. A member of the Valuation Tribunal, I need to not vote on this.
That's two abstentions. Councillor Strong?
I didn't vote either, Madam Chairman. My son and daughter both have businesses in Ersk. I've listened and obviously I'm not going to vote on it either way. But I will declare an interest if that's what I should do.
Thank you. The motion was carried.
Just as Nick gets the chair back in, I'm going to suggest, whether he takes this suggestion, we'll see, that we take a ten-minute break, but not until after we've considered councillor Reeson's question, given councillor Reeson's circumstances, if that's okay? The Chair may have a very different view and we might be keeping going, so.
Tony, we will take your question first.
Question is read, Chair.
Thank you.
I've done it, I've done it. Oh, beg your pardon. Yeah, it could be argued that it is for the scrutiny committee to assure itself that all relevant information has been provided for members to effectively scrutinise the matter in question. Nevertheless, I understand the Strong Communities scrutiny committee were comprehensively briefed on options for the future delivery of a few food waste service and on the details of the contract being considered prior to the decision to enter into the contract. It's a joint contract between Blaine Agwent CBC, Torvine CBC and ourselves. And as a member of the Joint Project Board which oversaw the contract development, I am aware that the project was supported by legal, financial and environmental specialists along with Welsh Government. It's also worth noting that Welsh Government is part funding the ongoing costs of the contract. That's about as much detail as I want to go into at this stage. If you have any more detailed questions, our new officer, Frances Williams, who I believe was, was, had quite a bit to do with this in its early stages, would, would be quite capable of answering any questions which you may wish to put. Thank you.
Do you have a subsequent question, Tony?
Yes, thank you Chair. My supplementary question relates to the scrutiny of the process by Strong Communities on the December the tenth, two thousand and fifteen, where a hundred and forty-page report presented to members, followed by further scrutiny on preferred business on November the sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Nor in these reports, and that's how thick they are, I may have missed it, can I find any reference to plastic bags being the preferred means of collecting food waste from our residents? Did I or other members of the committee miss it? How therefore, councillor Jones, can we at ManCC stand four square with our residents who support our recent decision to aim to create a plastic-free Malmesha when we clearly seem to be prepared to issue up to and use up to four million plastic bags per year to support its enterprise? Was all the information made of it by scrutiny at the time?
I think I pass this back to Frances.
Thank you. With regards to the plastic bags, the contract provides for the collection of the food waste within the cornstarch bags. And the contract and the contractor is able to and will collect the material in the cornstarch food waste bags. The contractor has approached the procurement partnership to ask whether the three local authorities that are using the facility, if they wish to collect the material in plastic bags. The reason being is that the food waste cornstarch bags actually hold the food waste. If you can imagine, the bags started to degrade quite quickly and food will stick to those bags. So the contractor is finding that they have to rip the cornstarch bags off when it enters the facility. And those cornstarch bags at the moment are separated from the food waste and they are being sent for incineration in an energy from waste facility. So what the contractor has said to the three local authorities is, you could provide plastic bags instead of cornstarch sacks. bags instead of cornstarch sacks because we will do exactly the same, whatever bag you provide. We will rip them off and they will go for energy from waste and incineration. So it's not that the contractor will not take them, they will. They're just saying, look, it's actually cheaper for you to provide these bags as plastic bags, not cornstarch sacks.
The comments that were made at the Strong Communities Select Committee meeting about using plastic bags was not totally correct. And can that then be taken back to Strong Communities to be confirmed?
Thank you, Chair.
We go back now, councillor Betroni, to your question.
As read, Chair.
Councillor Greenland, have you got the response to councillor Betroni?
Yes, certainly, Chairman. There have been no bookings for medieval banquets for this Christmas period. There are in fact a couple of bookings for weddings, but none for banquets. Medieval banquets were a big thing about 10 or 20 years ago, very popular, high ticket prices could be achieved, and they brought in quite a lot of profit for the operators and indeed for us as people running the castle. That is not quite so the case these days. But if an operator were to come to us and suggest that they wanted to hold some medieval banquets, yes, we'd certainly be talking to them about that. In fact, there was one organised in June, I think it was, of this year, but none since that time. I would also take this opportunity of mentioning that the management restructure, which was agreed through Cabinet for this area of the business, has yet to be fully implemented. But when it is, I would expect to see even more and more efficiency coming out of the running of Cardiff Castle. It has done very well. It has been challenged every year to reduce its budget and each year it has found difficulty in doing that. But this year, I have to say, it has done extremely well. So I look forward to a better result for Cardiff Castle in the future.
Thank you. Do you have a s-
Thank you, Chairman. It's deeply disturbing to hear there are no Christmas banquets planned this year. It was very popular 10, 15 years ago. It was run by a local company employing local people, delivering a profit for themselves and for the council. And it was a council decision by the Conservative administration that gave it to an outside contractor and then it never quite recovered. And I just wondered, do you, I don't know if you were councillor at the time, I suspect you were, do you have any regrets on that, on kicking out a local business who delivered every year successful money and returned to this local authority?
Yes, I was a councillor at the time, and there were some very good reasons why that business contract was finished. I don't think it's appropriate going to it here and now, but it would not have been done were it simply a matter of some form that we didn't like the company. There were very good reasons why that contract came to an end. But as I have said, if we had another company come to us and were to say they wish to organise banquets in Cardiff Castle, we would certainly want to talk to them and would be interested in reintroducing. Whether they could be as successful, as you quite acknowledged they were 10 or 20 years ago, I don't know. But we're always open to talk business with people, and especially for Cardiff Castle, because the way that we have run Cardiff Castle in the last few years has been a huge advantage, not only for this council, in the events that we've been organising, but also to the town of Cardiff Castle itself. We want to see that continue.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a short break now for 10 minutes and then we'll continue after that.
Why is the funding for the next year from Welsh Government a reduction of 1% when the Secretary of State, the Right Honourable Alan Cairns MP, has agreed a new funding package for Wales that gives £120 for every £100 spent in England? Does councillor Murphy agree that for the Labour administration to keep blaming Westminster is not a true reflection of the situation? And what representation are we making to the Welsh government in Cardiff Bay to demand a better settlement for Malmesha residents? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Murphy. Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Pratt for that. As has been stated at some length in the debate on the motion earlier on, goodness only knows. It's one of those mysteries that are sent to Trias, I think. But I'm pleased that the Labour Group were able to support the point for challenging our settlement, whatever Welsh Government think of the relationship with the Westminster government. Councillor Pratt goes on to ask in her question what we're doing about it. The leader is on the distribution subgroup, and I know he preaches every time he goes there about inequality, the WLGA on our behalf-
Okay, everybody, come on, please. councillor Betroni, you have a question, I believe?
As read, Chair.
Thank you. councillor John?
Thank you for the question. Currently, there are twenty schools in Monmouthshire that have completed the Learning with Autism Train the Trainer Programme, with eleven more scheduled for the next three months. This enables school staff to deliver the learning with autism training within their own schools. The total number of school staff trained to date is one hundred and seventy-seven, and the total number of pupils, or autism superheroes as they're known, is three hundred and ninety-three. Archbishop Rowan Williams and Cantrave Schools have received the whole school award. To enable early identification, twenty-two staff have been trained in early year settings in Monmouthshire, and the Early Bird Plus has been delivered thirty-one times. This is training for parents or carers of a specific child and the member of staff supporting that pupil.
Thank the cabinet member for that response. Only two schools, if I'm correct, had received the whole package of training, while Newport has done all their schools bar two, and Torvain have done all their schools. Just wondering why we're lagging behind in terms of the full package of training?
So, to achieve the whole school award, schools will need to have ensured that all teaching staff have completed the teacher certification programme, all learning support staff must have successfully completed the certification programme, all other support staff, and all school governors must have completed the ASD-Aware scheme, and the majority of key stage two pupils must have signed up to the Autism Superhero Charter. Now, as I say, twenty schools have already begun the training programme, eleven more scheduled in the next three months. We have regular meetings in the local authority with all our head teachers each half-term, and at one of those recent meetings, we discussed the autism training programme with head teachers. So it is being progressed. But clearly, I recognise there are a number of challenges for our schools. While teacher training is an issue for each individual school and that head teacher, I do recognise that there's considerable pressure on teachers' time and on the inset days, the time allocated for teacher training, particularly with the demands of the emerging new curriculum. But as I say, this issue is discussed regularly with head teachers, and we're making progress in terms of making the training available, and our schools are making good progress in completing the full training programme.
Thank you. We have a councillor, Pratt, you have a question for councillor Murphy?
Thank you, I will read it for the benefit of those watching on live streaming. Why is the funding for the next year from Welsh Government a reduction of one per cent when the Secretary of State, the right honourable Alan Cairns MP, has agreed a new funding package for Wales that gives a hundred and twenty pounds for every one hundred pounds spent in England? Does councillor Murphy agree that for the Labour administration to keep blaming Westminster is not a true reflection of the situation, and what representation are we making to the Welsh Government in Cardiff Bay to demand a better settlement for Monmouthshire residents? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Pratt for that. As has been stated at some length in the debate on the motion earlier on, goodness only knows. It's one of those mysteries that are sent to trius, I think. But I'm pleased that the Labour Group were able to support the point for challenging our settlement, whatever Welsh Government think of the relationship with the Westminster Government. Councillor Pratt goes on to ask in her question what we're doing about it. The leader is on the distribution subgroup, and I know he preaches every time he goes there about the inequality. The WLGA on our behalf is constantly lobbying. Every meeting where any of us meet a minister, we don't pass up on the opportunity of having a dig. But it is true to say that the local government itself will not vote for a change in the formula, because it disadvantages most of them, and only basically advantages a handful of us. So it is regrettable that despite all of the lobbying that goes on, we don't see a change. However, this year, I've never seen so much lobbying going on from such a unified group of councils, and perhaps this year, we might see something. We have in the past seen rules sparsity grants, perhaps something else might come along.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, can I ask if councillor Murphy agrees with the Labour council leader from Swansea, councillor Rob Stewart, when he suggests that the local government secretary, Alan Davies, is seriously characterising himself as the Mr Bumble of the Welsh Government, the cruel overseer of the poorhouse?
Yes, mister chairman.
There are two questions in there, two question marks. Is that allowed?
It was an oversight, Roger. We often do it in planning, don't we?
Right, and the last question in the afternoon is from the Reverend councillor, councillor Matthew Lane.
I think, Chairman, it's Malcom Lane. My question is directed to county councillor Richard John, cabinet member. What steps is the authority taking to prepare for the introduction of Thirty Hours Free Childcare from January 2019?
Well, thank you very much for the question. I'm really pleased we're bringing this scheme forward. We've been putting pressure on Welsh Government to be an early implementer of the Thirty Hours Free Childcare scheme, which is due to be rolled out Wales-wide in September 2020. So I'm really pleased that we're going to be implementing this in Monmouthshire in January 2019. And I'm also really pleased it's going to be countywide. A number of local authorities where it's been piloted have done it on a ward-by-ward basis. So if you live in one ward, you may be able to access the Thirty Hours Free Childcare, but not in other wards, which I think would create some unnecessary issues. So really pleased we're implementing this. It's going to be available to parents of three- and four-year-olds for forty-eight weeks of the year, as long as they work a minimum of sixteen hours a week and earn under one hundred thousand pounds. I recognise the eye-watering levels of childcare costs, and that they may be a barrier to employment in the county. So really pleased we're bringing this forward. In terms of what we're doing to introduce the scheme in January, regular meetings are taking place with Newport City Council, who are delivering the childcare offer on our behalf. A number of information sessions have been held for childminders. All registered childcare settings catering for three-to-four-year-olds... All registered childcare settings catering for three-to-four-year-olds have been visited to inform them of the offer and encourage them to sign up. Support is being provided to some of those settings to complete the application forms where necessary. The application process for parents opens on the twelfth of November 2018, and this is an online application which is available on the Family Information Service website.
Do you have a supplementary?
We're scrutinised by the Joint Select Committee on the twentieth of the third. I understand that the take-up in other pilot areas has been quite weak, or not as good as expected. What are we doing to make this scheme giving its full awareness in our county?
You're absolutely right. There has been an issue in some of the other local authorities where the scheme has been rolled out early, where uptake has been much lower than anticipated. Clearly, it will be of support to families who already have children aged between three and four in childcare, but hopefully, the scheme will also be available to people who perhaps want to go back to work, but the high cost of childcare is a barrier. And hopefully, when it is introduced in Monmouthshire, both those types of parents will be able to benefit. But I think in other local authorities, there had been an expectation of higher uptake. So I think we have a responsibility now in Monmouthshire to ensure awareness is as high as possible, and that anyone who is eligible is able to take part. We have been producing leaflets for parents to help raise awareness. These are being distributed through childcare providers, through schools, and the Family Information Service. We've got a lot of information on our websites. Local media have all been advised about it, and social media is also being used extensively to promote the childcare offer. But I would also say to colleagues in this chamber, we all have a responsibility to promote the benefits of this scheme. It's not something that's just available in Monmouthshire, or certainly by the time it's rolled out completely. There's already a Thirty Hours Free Childcare scheme available just across the border in England, and I hope that we can all do what we can within our wards, particularly in areas where they may be more vulnerable, or perhaps more deprived, built from a deprived background, who perhaps could do with this additional financial support. So I'd urge colleagues, let's all do what we can to raise awareness of this fantastic scheme.
Thank you, Richard. Right, it completes the questions. Now, we are going on to item eight, which is to confirm the minutes of the meeting of the county council held here on the twentieth of September 2018.
Move, Chair.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you, Paul. Has there anybody got anything they wish to raise on that? No, good. Then we go on to the minutes of the audit committee, held here on the fifth of July.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I will ask members to accept those minutes.
Somebody move that, please. Thank you, Paul. Anything, anybody else to raise on that? So, we now go on to agenda, item eleven A, from the Social Care and Safeguarding Directorate. Sorry, I missed Democratic, missing out of here. Sorry, pardon. Sorry, pardon, I missed Democratic Services. Sorry, David.
That's fine, Chair.
Can I ask the councillor to accept the minutes as read, please? Thank you. You've got a question, Jamie?
I'd just like to point out that I sent apologies, but they're not recorded for that meeting, please, thank you.
On to item eleven A, turning back onto my agenda. Right, Sarah, I think this is your department.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, a big thank you to David Jones and his team, Lyndra Gorman, in terms of presenting the statement of the papers that are in front of you today. It's a lot of work that's gone into this. And in terms of what we're being asked to consider, we're being asked to consider our resolution that's been formally agreed previously, which is not to permit casinos in our county. We're also being asked to adopt the 2019 Statement of Gambling Policy, and as a council, we have a duty to renew this every three years as part of our requirements under the Gambling Act, and it's needed to commence on the thirty-first of January 2019. And this will be the fourth time that this council's been asked to do that since the Gambling Act came into force. The policy you've got in front of you itself, and the resolution not to permit casinos, it's been presented to the Licensing Committee, it's been consulted on widely, and we've received responses from Public Health Wales and the Nire Bevan Health Board, as well as the wider Gwent Licensing Forum. In the policy document you've got in front of you today, you'll see that there's a number of amends, none of which are substantial amends, but they're there in front of you in red font to show the level of engagement that's taken place and has been reflected in this document. So as cabinet member, I commend to the council the revised policy, and ask for its adoption, along with the resolution not to permit casinos in our county. And I know Dave's here to answer any technical questions if they arise.
Councillor Watts?
Yes, Chair. What do we, I know it's slightly off-topic, but it does cover it slightly in here, I guess the proliferation of betting shops really, in particular towns, with his one, two, or even three betting shops. Is there a maximum, what is the criteria where we think is appropriate, inasmuch as that it disproportionately affects, you know, gambling at this level can, not always, and I'm not, I want to make clear that I'm not opposed to gambling, is that it can affect certain demographic disproportionately compared to, I guess, you know, other parts of, or other areas within the community. What are we doing about betting shops?
If you hold on a moment, we bring you the necessary officer to the front.
Whilst we're waiting, can I just point out that I think the directorate, it's the wrong directorate on the top of the document, says social care, safeguarding, and health, and it should be social justice. Thank you.
David, did you hear the question from councillor Watts?
In terms of the latter part, it's just obviously our report through to Julie Boothroyd, so we put the directorate name on the betty pointer. Yeah, in terms of number of betting shops in a particular premise, there's no saturation policy. However, it does talk about under one seven interested parties. The policy does talk about every application be considered on its merits, and it is very closely vetted, so not only ourselves. The Gambling Commission look at it from an operator's licence perspective, and we look at it from a premises licensing perspective as well. So basically, if anything new does come, that's well covered.
We have no maximum criteria. It's a case-by-case basis. So effectively, as talked about earlier in the private discussion that we had, you know, it wasn't kind of secret, but effectively, the betting shop, so I was wandering in Caldey Town Centre the other day, you've got two shops now taken over by a betting shop, and then opposite, there's a betting shop as well, that do a, on a Tuesday afternoon, do a good business. And I worry about that really, Chair, that we're just simply just allowing this to happen with quite passive responses, really. This is the criteria. We're not actually talking about it or demanding some kind of reform here, because, you know, this affects people's lives.
Yeah, valid point. And the policy also refers to the CMO report 1617, which talks about, you know, gambling and health, so I think that's helpful as well. But in terms of the process, I think, you know, obviously that would go to licensing committee in terms of the premises licence application. So certainly, that would come into play. I think that obviously planning may come into play if it's going through a change of use. So I think there are criteria there in terms of, your point is, isn't it, an expansion of betting shops in a particular town? Key is, the Gambling Commission, look at that on a regional basis, and I know Public Health Wales are also looking at that as well, in terms of the geography where these premises are. Obviously, it tends to be town centres, not going to be in, you know, Flandegverth necessarily. It's going to tend to be in your towns, you know, clearly. But I know the Gambling Commission looking at that, and because the CMOs refer to, in his annual reports, I know that Public Health Wales are on a particular piece of work in terms of mapping out where they are, and that should inform then licensing committees when applications come forward.
Councillor Betroni?
Yeah, just on that point, your latter point was interesting. Aren't the Gambling Commission funded by the industry?
I'm not fully familiar with their funding streams. Lynda's on a cruise, I mean, she's the expert, but certainly, certainly, so she's the expert. I can certainly get back to the Lynda member when she returns. I'm not a hundred per cent sure of the funding streams.
Okay, councillor Brown?
Hopefully not to Monaco or anywhere like that. On a serious point, though, the Gambling Commission, I believe, are funded by industry, so isn't there a conflict of interest? And I think we should look at that.
And I think it's helpful that, like I say, it has been brought for, particularly in Wales, through the, you know, Chief Medical Officer Wales has raised as his key concern for 1617. That's been published. It does talk about what we should be looking at in terms of local authorities and the Gambling Commission. I'm not sure about the funding stream, but I know they too are looking at this whole issue that councillor Watts has raised in terms of is there saturation, where do we need to focus in. It does tend to have a detriment on lower socioeconomic groups to quite some significance. And if you look at the link that the CMO reports in there, that'll answer some of the questions as to where we are with it. And I think helpfully, Public Health Wales are obviously focusing in on that as a priority nationally. That helps?
Councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The point that councillor Watts has made is also a point that I was concerned about as well. But I was pleased to see that, obviously, the amendments to the policy are in red, and at the bottom of, if you look at page sixty-six on the council agenda, it does say that considerations within decision-making include other gambling premises, and if there is an existing cluster of gambling premises. So I think in that sense, there is that flexibility within the policy. But obviously, I'll see what the head of public policy says on that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, there's nobody else who can raise their hands. The record... Oh, sorry, Brian.
Sorry, Chairman, just as chairman of licensing, I'd just like to recommend approval of the...
Second, Chairman.
Okay, will all those show, please? Okay, thank you very much indeed.